Vermillion City Council meeting scheduled for Monday, May 19th at 6:00 PM will come to order. Katie, will you please call roll?
Toller, Labor, Price, Holland, Genuine, Helwig, Cheeseman, Murrah, Mayor Cole.
Here. Will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does everyone have a chance to review the minutes for May 5th, 2025, the special meeting and May 5th, 2025, regular meeting? If so, are there any changes to the minutes or a motion to approve? Motion approved by Councilor Genuine. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holland. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying nay. Motion carries. Next item, the adoption of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda? If so, is there any changes or motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Councilor Cheeseman and second by Councilor Price. Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Agenda is hereby adopted. Under visitors to be heard, for visitors to be heard, a person's addressing the council asks you please use the microphone at the podium and raise your hand to be recognized and go to the podium and state your name and address. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard, and remarks are limited to five minutes, but no decision will be made at this time. For agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after explained by staff, and public testimony will then be closed and be given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda items unless the council member moves to allow another person to speak and unanimous consent is received by the council. Questions, however, may be directed at staff or member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. Is there any visitors to be heard for any items that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we do have a proclamation to be heard as well proclaiming proclaiming recognizing May 18th, 2024, May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care in those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services fill healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it resolved, we, the governing body, City of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim May 18th through 24th as Emergency Medical Services Week. In the City of Vermillion, encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities celebrating the 51st anniversary of EMS Week, We Care for Everyone, dated this day in Vermillion, South Dakota, 19th of May, 2025. I understand we have a couple EMS personnel here who want to come up and accept the proclamation. And if Chief Callahan or Division Chief Klunder want to say any words, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council.
We're proclaiming this week EMS Week. It's an honor to provide services to the city and the county. I am going to turn it over to Division Chief Klunder, who oversees our EMS and Special Operations Division, to say a few words.
It's truly a pleasure. Chief Callahan doesn't usually let me talk in public, so (laugh) on a serious note, Mayor Cole and members of City Council, thank you for all being here today as we recognize and celebrate EMS Week, a time dedicated to honoring the brave and compassionate individuals who serve on the front lines of emergency care. Emergency medical services professionals, our EMTs, paramedics, firefighters, dispatchers, and support staff are the heartbeat of our healthcare systems in response in times of crisis. Whether it's a car accident on a remote road, a cardiac arrest at home, or a mass casualty event, EMS is there, first on scene and last to rest. They answer the calls at all hours, brave all kinds of weather, and provide care under the most difficult and unpredictable circumstances. But today, as we show our appreciation, we must also face the harsh truth, EMS is in crisis. One of the most pressing issues we face is a critical staffing shortage across the country. EMS agencies are struggling to recruit and retain professionals. The reasons I'll say for an ongoing discussion. Quite frankly, we are asking fewer people to do more, to do longer shifts, and to stretch themselves thinner than ever before while managing a family and school full-time employment. The COVID-19 pandemic exposed many of the weaknesses in the healthcare system. For EMS, it's already pushed a strained workforce to the brink. While other sectors have seen recovery, EMS continues to suffer. Staffing gaps lead to slower response times, units taken unservice due to lack of personnel, and rural communities such as ours are feeling the weight of the shortage, and yet they still show up. To our EMS workers, thank you. Your courage, sacrifice, resilience do not go unnoticed. You save lives, you comfort the suffering, and you serve with honor. And often you do all these things without asking for the recognition you truly deserve. So let this week be in celebration and motivation to recognize and support our EMS heroes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other visitors to be heard? Seeing none, moving on. The next item we have is public hearings. First reading of ordinance 1532 to amend Title 15 Reference Zoning Regulations. A request to move from R. 2 residential district to R. 3, property located at 419 and 505 Adams Street. Jose.
Thank you. Mr. William Wood, owner of the land, has requested that the city rezone his property on Adams Street as described above or previously described, from the R. 2 residential district to the R. 3 residential district. The area is roughly a 0.94 acres in size. We're particularly specifically discussing the area bounded by the red rectangle. Here's Adams Street, Madison, Madison, Lincoln. As far as the zoning, everything that you see in pink would be the R. 2 district. This teal-green color is the R. 3 district that they're wanting to bring their, the parcels that they own into, and this here would be R. 4 district. That's Trailer Court that goes all the way from Adams all the way to Plum Street. As you can see, most of the properties surrounding the existing buildings are either apartments on the north. You do have some single-family homes, and then over in this corner over here, you do have a fraternity. I do want to mention that's one of the single-family homes that you see directly adjoining the property or adjacent to it are probably duplexes or town, not townhomes, but mainly a duplex, and I believe that would be this one here is a duplex right here, and I believe there's another, a couple of ones on the east side of Prentice. The existing apartments on this property were constructed in 1967. From the time that they were constructed until 2008, the area allowed for apartments to be, for similar apartments to be constructed. The existing apartment is a 12plex with 36 bedrooms. In 2008, the zoning ordinance was updated, and this property along with the surrounding neighborhood was zoned into the R. 2 residential district, which is the pink area that you see, or shade that you see on the map. Since 2008, the maximum size for the units has been reduced to no more than 16 bedroom units. In 2018, several properties were rezoned from R. 2 residential district into the R. 3 residential district. In this particular area, these two apartment complexes were rezoned at that time. That was done to bring the existing apartments, in that case those two, in conformance with what their use was in the zoning. Excuse me. Mr. Wood's desire for rezoning his property into the R. 3 district is so that he is able to rebuild if something were to happen to them. Although the use is allowed to exist, it does so as a non-conforming use. This means that the building can only be improved if the cost of improvement does not exceed 50% of the assessed value. Similarly, if the building were to be damaged and the repairs were to cost more than 50% of the assessed value, their reconstruction or repair would not be allowed. Zoning this lot into the R. 3 residential district should not be, should not negatively impact the neighborhood. There are already high-density residential developments in the vicinity, as I mentioned earlier. It should also be noted that the use will not change existing apartment building, and that will remain. In the event that apartment building needs to be reconstructed, other requirements may limit the size of the new construction, and those have been made aware to Mr. Woods as well. This item was considered by the City Planning Commission at their May 12th meeting. At that meeting, the commission voted 7 to 0 to recommend the city council adopt the rezonance proposed. There were three members of the public present at that meeting, the owner and two of his representatives. The council is asked to hold a public hearing today. Staff and the planning commission recommend the property to be rezoned and that the city council advance the ordinance for consideration and final determination at a second reading on June 2nd.
Thank you, Jose. Are there any visitors to be heard on this topic? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Any discussion by council?
Motion to advance.
Motion to advance by Councilor Murrah. There's a second by Councilor Toller. Is there a question by Councilor Price?
I have a question, Jose. What's the northern part of the property, those lots, are they just vacant?
They're empty right now, yes.
Okay. Is there a plan to develop them, or, I mean, is that part of this?
No, there's no, as far as I know, there's no plan to develop any of this. My understanding is that everything will remain as is.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any, there's motion on the table. Is there any other questions or comments? Motion to advance to second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I get that. Could you try again?
Try again.
What'd you say?
Try again.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post saying nay. Motion to advance carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Siri.
(laugh)
(inaudible).
Next item, we have old business. We have a second reading for 1530, which is to amend for public works in reference to resale of utility services. I believe this one is for water. Go ahead.
Thank you. So we do have an existing section 5121 that covers the resale of utility services. Historically, we've always looked at this, this code to include all utility services, even though it was included in Chapter 51, which is for electricity. Ordinance 1530 will carry the same spirit as 5121 with language that more clearly identifies that all utility services are included in this chapter, and will also move the chapter to Chapter 50, to the general provisions. The other change is that we'll more clearly state the requirement for submetering for any authorization that you guys allow. The ordinance has not changed since the first reading. Adoption of the ordinance will only involve publication costs. With that, administration recommends approval of ordinance 1530, and a roll call vote is required for the second reading.
Thank you, Shane. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Any discussion by council?
Motion is changed. I move approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Holland. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Councilor Murrah. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, move to the machine for tablet vote.
Did you do the right one?
You did. Eight yays, zero nays. Motion carries. Next item, for second reading ordinance of 1531 to amend Title 5 Reference Resale for Electricity.
Thank you. So the proposed ordinance 1531 is an amendment to 5121. It is simply updating language to align with the previous item, ordinance 1530. There have been no changes to the ordinance since the first reading. Adoption of the ordinance will only involve publication costs. With that, administration recommends approval of ordinance 1531. A roll call vote is required.
Thank you. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion? Discussion by council?
Motion to move to second.
Motion approved by Councilor Murrah. There's a second by Councilor Price. Any other discussion? Move to the machine again. Eight yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. That is all for old business. Moving to new business, we have a request for additional funding for the 2025 Shakespeare Festival. John?
Thank you. There's some information. It was presented, a request at your May 5th noon meeting to provide additional funding for this year's Shakespeare Festival. In that, a discussion is noted that the South Dakota Humanities Grant, which had always provided some funding in recent years for it, was not going to be available immediately. This year it was paused, and the shortfall was approximately $6,000 at that point in time. There is a discussion, a request that provides some information on the attendance figures, and so utilizing what the Shakespeare Festival had submitted each year with your annual request for funding from the Bed, Board, and Booze Fund, included in your packet was a list of the attendance numbers going back to 2018. There's also a comment noted at the last meeting about that, is this a one-time request? Will this be an additional amount needed each year? And I think the comment was offered that there was not a plan to continue to request funding beyond the original 5,000 that was provided each year for a number of years here. That was followed up in your packet. There's some discussion on the BBB fund, some of the variability that we've experienced in that fund over the years. Particularly last year, we received some payments for underpayments back in 2022 and 2023. We also noted that when you adopted the budget for 2025, in September of 2024, there was about 118,000 of the BBB anticipated receipts that were not budgeted. But since that time, the Grover Million campaign came, and you made a pledge to that from the Bed, Board, and Booze Fund of 75,000. So we, hopefully we've given you the background with respect to how the fund stands, some attendance numbers with regard to the Shakespeare Festival. A number was offered, I believe, at noon meeting today, commented that the shortfall at that time was $4,894, that, as I understood it, that they are looking to receive an additional funding to help this year's event be able to pay its way. So I know there's a couple representatives here that can offer additional comments on it. Be happy to answer any questions the council or public might have.
Thank you, John. Is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council. As John mentioned, there's a couple people here. If you do have questions. Rich, you have something?
Just a minor correction.
Mike, Mike.
Minor question, Mayor Prescott. It's 4,849, not 94.
Oh, sorry.
Forty-nine. That's all, and I'll abstain.
Okay. Councilor Holland abstained from the discussion vote. Is there any other discussion from the council?
I got it.
Councilor Toller?
Does this, does the Shakespeare Festival typically have like a backup funds in case something happens, in case there's like an emergency or anything like that, some funds fall short?
Might be a question for the people represented for the Shakespeare Festival, I would assume, on that one.
Good evening. I'm Greg Huckabee. I'm the president of the Shakespeare Festival. I brought with me my secretary, Ms. Connie Nelson. Her husband is Dennis Nelson, and our trusted treasurer is also doing double duty here tonight as the councilman, Rich Holliday. So how can I help you?
Does, do you, do you guys typically carry like a backup reserve for emergencies or in case you run shortage of funding at all?
Yes. We had, for example, for this year, we had a carryover of $10,000 from last year. But as all of you know, nobody foresaw what was going to happen to us with what has simply been referred to in the plain talk as the Doge attack. We received a letter on April 16th from Christina A., the executive director of the South Dakota Humanities Council. She wrote, "We are writing to inform you that due to an unexpected cut in federal funding, we are temporarily pausing all grant award notifications." She states in her letter, "This development came as a surprise, particularly as a continuing resolution to fund the government was passed on March 15th, 2025, which led us to believe that our funding stream would remain stable." The South Dakota Arts Council has provided us $5,000 every year since we started 13 years ago, and the council helped establish the festival and has been supporting it, as John mentioned, every year since then. So we were all surprised, as I think you were as well, with what happened. So what we're doing right now, obviously, is we're trying to, in an emergency situation, meet our budget. But then clearly, we must have a new revenue stream going forward for next year. Our fiscal year begins July 1st and ends June 30th. So there are a dozen members, non-paid, like Richard, who sit on the board of directors. The people we pay are a dozen actors and costume designers and electrical technicians and so forth. But everybody on the board is a volunteer, and it takes us a full year to bring all of this together, to provide not just four nights of what will be this year Romeo and Juliet, but we also have daytime programs that we run. So we put on a program at Sezneg. We do a program at the Sanford Care Center. We have elementary and high school age workshops that we all do during the day. And what distinguishes this program started 13 years ago is that it's free. It is free. We charge nobody anything at all. The Argus Leader, in its article about-
Well, real quick, Mr. Huckabee, just because of the-
Sure.
He asked a question. Yeah. Did you get your question kind of answered?
No. So you typically carry about $10,000 over, which you said you did for this year?
Yes.
And so is this request in addition to the $10,000 you guys have in reserve?
Yes. Well, actually, we'd already, our revenue is down as a result of what, I mean, the $5,000, for example, from the Arts Council. That, we have to replace that, not find it, and that's why we're here, asking for a, an increase in the city council's budget to handle what we were unable to, to do that we would ordinarily get from the South Dakota Arts Council.
Okay. And then in addition to that, a couple weeks ago, we were, what were we short, like $6,000, I think you said, Rich? Is that right?
That's right.
Is that the current amount that we're short still two weeks later?
No.
Have we done any private fundraising since then?
We received additional funding from the VC, DC, for example, and Rich can probably tell you some other people that we received funding from.
Let me, let me summarize a couple things. First of all, we try to carry over every year. We have to. In our budget, there's usually a 3%, say something's going to go wrong, we need this extra money. But last year's $10,000 is completely consumed and is included in this, so we depleted that. We're down to zero again. But in our budget is 3,000 for, I won't call it miscellaneous, it's whatever happens. It changes some type. That's, that's what we have right now. And the, to date, all the money we received, we're still at $4,849 short. So it's not 6,000 anymore, it's 4, 4,849. Did I answer it, Jay?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Sir, any other comments or questions? Is there any motions? Councilor, uh, Cheeseman?
Yeah, I move, you know, this has been a great event, I'm sorry. This has been a great event for the City of Vermillion for a lot of years. I know it brings in business to the City of Vermillion, and it's sort of a staple. People look forward to it every year, and I'd like to move that we fund the full amount of the shortfall.
Could you state the shortfall again? Okay, thank you.
So there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Price. Any other discussion? I have one quick question. Mr. Huckabee, or kind of even Rich, do you guys intend on also applying for outside funding for the budget year 2026?
Absolutely. We need a new funding stream in order to make up-
I meant from the city. I'm sorry. I meant from the city.
No, I think that what we've been able to get in the past, what the city has done the past 13 years, I think that is more than sufficient. We have to come up with a new funding stream to replace the South Dakota Shakespeare, the South Dakota Arts Council laws.
Okay. So it would, your request would be the same as what it was for 2025?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify if you were going to request that next year?
Yes.
I know budget's coming up, so. Any other questions? Motion on the table to make up the shortfall of $4,800 and some odd change. How was it? Four, 4,849?
$4,849.
Thank you, Rich. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post saying nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. Next item will be a request for additional funding for the 2025 year for the Vermillion Housing Authority.
Thank you. The Vermillion Housing Authority is a component unit of the city's audit. I wonder if somebody hit?
No.
They'll fix the lights here. Okay. He's, Dan's getting it. It's a-
Forgot to pay the bill?
I know.
We haven't got to that part of the meeting yet.
I know, guy. So the Vermillion Housing Authority is a component unit of the city's audit. That is due to the fact that the city council points to members who serve on the Vermillion Housing Authority Board. They've had a couple of challenges over the last couple of years. For many years, the city's provided $8,500 of funding in your budget to cover the audit cost for the housing authority, in addition to providing them some free office space here in City Hall and some related minor things. The cost for their audit and the timing of those payments have gone up. You heard a request, I think it was last October, November, somewhere in that timeframe. Instead of having the audit paid for when it was completed, now they have to make a progress payment before it starts, and then a payment when it's done. That led to a total audit cost in 2024 of, I lost that number here, $13,981. Then it includes two different audit payments in there. As with many things, your audit cost has gone up 35% over the last couple of years. The audit cost for this upcoming year for the housing authority, and their budget year ends June 30th of any given year, is $11,500. So it's gone from the 8,500 just back in 2023 to 11,500 in 2020, for the year ending 2025. And then again, there's also the timing of the payments. So this January, you help them make the final payment for their year-ending audit, June 30th of 2024. They're requesting to have the budget amended to cover the 2025 year-end audit cost. I would note there's an error in the final sentence of my memo. I didn't add up the numbers right. Instead of the number that's listed there, I'd recommend that you revise the budget to, I'll just round it up, 16,900. That would cover the payment that was made earlier for the year-ending audit of 2024, and it'll cover the entire cost for the audit that will end June 30th of 2025. This funding does come from the general fund, as it is, again, a component unit of your budget. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, John. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for any discussion. Any discussion by council? Councilor Price?
So unlike the previous request, we would assume that this would be an ongoing one-
That is correct.
Every year, right?
Unless, of course, from my understanding, they find a different audit company that is much cheaper in cost.
Is that an option?
I'll say from the, it would be tough. We experienced that as a city, that the entities that do government audits are getting fewer and fewer, and their ability to take on new clients, they do, kudos to them. This has been done through a local auditing firm, if at all possible. And as you know, we don't have a lot of choices for auditors here in the community. So I can't say specifically if they've gotten a quote from different firms out there. It's like a lot of firms, you tend to stick with the auditor that you have unless something changes dramatically, or in the case of a bid, there's a lower bid out there.
I know that, I know in speaking with the director on this situation, he advised that he's trying to find another auditor, but like John mentioned, it's a niche that is difficult to find, that people will do, and I guess the city, or the size with the housing authority are right over that cusp of requiring an audit. So I suppose it's a necessary, when we get to that certain size, that happens as well. So, Councilor Toller?
I think that was my point. Last year, we were looking, when we were going over the budget too, this seemed like that was a pretty substantial amount to increase it from year over year, and now we're increasing another, what's the exact increase, John, we're doing here, from like 10 to 13 or something?
Yeah, 2024 was 8,500, excuse me, 2,000, for their year ending 2023, it was 8,500. For the year ending June 30th, 2025, it's 11,500. I believe it was an even 11,000 for the year ending June 30th of 2024.
Yeah, that's my only concern. Yeah, that's my only concern, that just the increase in cost going forward, too, and as long as they've looked at some other sources to try to get this maybe done a little more reasonable, or a little cheaper. I guess we're kind of stuck doing what we have to do now, but I'd like to see at, at least a couple of inquiries made and see if we can save some money next year.
Yeah. Like I said, I know in speaking with the director, he's made calls and attempts, and I even referred a couple, and nothing was able to be found on that that'd be willing to do it yet. Counselor Cheeseman?
What's the justification for their increase?
You have had a change in firms. The firm that was doing it back in 2023, they retired, and then it was taken over by a different group. I do not believe, and I don't have actual numbers on this, I've heard that other entities in the community are experiencing the same thing with this transition from one auditing firm to other ones, that perhaps the old auditor maybe wasn't charging market rate, and the new auditor is charging closer to market rate.
I think it's also one of those things, too, with, if you have a special niche and not much competition. Kind of like specialized lawyers. Motions?
Over.
Motion approved by Counselor Genuine, and second by Counselor Lieber. Any other discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay? Motion carries.
That wasn't a stab at you by any means, it was other attorneys.
Next item we have is a request from the VCDC to close Church Street from East Main to Kidder from 3:30 to 6:30 on October 31st for downtown trick-or-treat.
So it is street closing season. The VCDC's turned in all the rest of theirs for the balance of this year, and you have another one coming up here. So over the course of the next couple of meetings, you will see different requests come through. I guess last time you had the Dakota Days Parade and another one. This is also a fall event. As the mayor noted, the VCDC has developed a very successful downtown trick-or-treat event this year, that is Friday, October 31st. The event is from three, excuse me, the time of the closure request is 3:30 PM to 6:30 PM. It would be the one block of Church Street, that would be East Main Street to Kidder Street, so basically in front of the library, the side of BMO Bank, the law office, and then the side of the Baptist Church. We, it notes in there that the VCDC will be providing notifications, and that they will take care of the cleanup, and, as well as other items related to the closure. We'd recommend approval of the closure of Kidder Street, excuse me, of Church Street from East Main to Kidder Street for the VCDC's downtown trick-or-treat event on Friday, October 31st from 3:30 PM to 6:30 PM.
Thank you, John. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, counsel for discussion? Counselor Holland?
Mr. Prescott, is there any, is there any, what, what's the right word to use? Problems of being so early? Could something come up in the month where we couldn't change it?
Between, between now and October, where we wouldn't want to change it? Potentially, yes. I guess, I would say this is a section of road that's perhaps a little bit easier to close, because it's, it's not Main Street, if you will.
Yeah.
It is, certainly that is, I guess, one challenge when these are turned in earlier than, you know, two months out, for example. But at the same time, it helps them plan to, to have these events secured that way.
No. I, I think it's a good idea, I just, I didn't know, can we, something came up, change it without having to have a meeting?
On the look at the city attorney, my guess is, you, if you're approving it, the governing body that approves it, the governing body would have to be the ones that take it away, I guess.
I can look into it more in depth, but yeah, that would be my general assumption of it.
Okay. I, I couldn't think of any problems, but I was asking about that. Thank you.
Any other discussion, or motions?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Cheeseman, and there's, there's second by Counselor Holland. Any other discussion? All in favor of the street closure for Vermillion Trick-or-Treat Event? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay? Motion carries. Next item, we have VCD's request to close Main and Court to the alleyway between 19 Brewery and Court Trust Bank for Stand Still Parade of Lights, there's a bunch of other street closures in there, but you go through all of them.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. So this is another successful annual event here in our community, and that is the annual Stand Still Parade of Lights. The VCDC has submitted this request. This year, that event would be on Thursday, December 4th of 2025. The time of the closure request is 4:00 PM to 7:30 PM. The streets that would be closed would be Main Street from the west side of the intersection with Court Street, so Court and Main would still be open through that intersection, to the alley that's on the west side of the Radigan Plats. And then, basically, it's a half-block off of Main Street Prospect from Main to the alley, but you could still access the Court Trust drive-through. And then Market Street is from Main Street South to the alley that runs east-west, parallel to Main Street. This is an annual event. It's, it's, I think, developed quite a reputation and become more and more successful each year, as long as weather isn't an issue. The Vermillion Fire and EMS departments, police, and street department, we've notified all of them, and they did not have any concerns with respect to this closure. The VCDC does note that they'll be notifying the businesses, and they would handle the cleanup after the, the parade of lights on Thursday, December 4th. We'd recommend approval of the closure.
Thank you, John. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to counsel for discussion? Any motions? Motion by Counselor Lieber, second by Counselor Murrah. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay? Motion carries. Next item, we have Packard Group request to close the alley between East Main and East National for Friday, May 30th.
So the Packard Group will be holding their Thunder Dosticity art opening on Friday, May 30th, between 5:00 and 7:30, and they're requesting to close a section of the alley between Center Street and the West City Hall parking lot. They will be responsible for all of the cleanup, and then they'll just be barricading a small section of the alley, but the rest will still be open to the public. Part of the event will be held indoors as well as outdoors, and no other businesses will be affected. Fire, police, EMS have all been notified, and they have no concerns, so administration recommends that this is approved.
Thank you, Maddy. Any visitors to be heard on this? Counsel for discussion, any discussion by counsel? Motion approved by Counselor Murrah, second by Counselor Price. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay? Motion carries. Next item up, we have a resolution to annex property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of South Dakota Highway 50 in Princeton. Jose?
Thank you. The owners of Marv Track 1 are requesting the city council consider annexing their property into city limits. Marv Track 1 is a 37.1 parcel or tract of land located, as we mentioned, on northeast corner of the intersection between Highway 50 and Princeton. Currently, the owners will continue farming the property, but want to have the property as ready as possible for future development. For reference, here's the bypass or Highway 50. This would be, this would be Walmart right there, Casey's. The property that we're discussing as far as annexation would be this area right here. The owners have submitted their petition to annex above-mentioned area into municipal boundaries of the city. If the property is developed, the city will be, will extend the utilities to the area so that the future lots can be serviced. The area will enter in city, into city limits, Zone NRC or Nature, Natural Resource Conservation, which is the most restrictive zoning district, and allows for farming operations within the city. Rezoning of the property will follow at a later meeting, if necessary, due to any future developments. The annexation will lead to an increase in the city's property tax base. If developed, the area could lead to additional job prospects, new residences, and new utility customers as well. Administration recommends approving the resolution to annex Marv Track 1.
Thank you, Jose. Is there any visitors to be heard on this topic?
Chris Larson, Clay Union Electric, and I offer our support for this annexation of this property.
Thank you, Chris. Any other visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to counsel for discussion, any discussion by counsel? Counselor Lieber?
I just missed, what's, what's the zoning going to be on that?
NRC.
NRC, okay.
Jose, is there plans that I would assume to pave that roadway, Princeton Avenue going north to the city line then?
If the paving of that were to occur, it would be due to development. At this point, we don't have any plans to extend any paving or utilities or anything of that sort.
But if it was developed, we would?
Yeah. If it was developed, then we would be extending it. Furthest point would be to that point there, but depending on where the development is, we might stop short.
Sure. And I heard you say this would help grow our tax base, which eventually, further down the road, would help, obviously, with city funding and citizens?
Yep.
And county?
Yep.
Counselor Holland, did you hear something?
I didn't. You asked it. It's fine.
Okay. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Counselor Murrah, second by Counselor Price. Any other discussion on this? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Those saying nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Jose.
Thank you.
Next item we have is authorization to notify electric co-op of intent to service an annexed area, the one we just heard, Shane.
Yep. So as you said, this is a, purpose of this authorization is to notify Clay Union Electric of the city's intent to provide the annexed property with electrical services. By state law, if the city does not provide that intent within one year, then that property stays in the rule, electric co-op's service territory. It should be noted that the city is elected to serve all annexed areas since that law was, since that one-year deadline was put into place back in 1992. We do not believe there are any existing utility or customers in that area right now. However, we do propose to purchase any service rights and service territory per state statute. Clay Union was notified of this, that this item would be on tonight's agenda. If approved, counsel, or the city will work with Clay Union Electric to transfer any service of existing properties, and then, as I said, if any new customers come in, then lost revenue payments will be made, and will follow state statute, and are making those reimbursements. Electric budget does put funds in place every year to cover those costs. With that, administration recommends the city elect to serve the annexed area and approve the attached notice of intent to purchase the electric utility properties in the annexed area.
Thank you, Shane. Any visitors to be heard on this?
Chris Larson, Clay Union Electric, again. I just want to start out before I read my prepared remarks here. I am not, I'm not pointing fingers at any direct personnel on my remarks or on policy and procedures. Integrity as a core value emphasizes acting ethically and transparently, doing the right thing even when no one is watching, and being accountable for your actions. I received notice on Friday, May 16th via email at 11 o'clock, which stated the following. The City of Vermillion received an annexation request earlier this week. This request is scheduled for council consideration at the council meeting on May 19th at 6 o'clock. The agenda also includes a memo for authorization to notify Clay Union of the city's desire to serve the area with electrical services. Not one word about where, not how much, how many acres, nothing about who petitioned it. So I sent an email asking staff to reply. The response I got, northwest corner of Princeton and bypass. Very little information. So after this response, I made a call, visited with staff, finally figured out and got the information that I thought was pertinent, that should have been part of the original notice. So why such a big secret? I even called Clay World Water Manager and asked him if he knew anything about it, and to this day, he says, I didn't even know an annexation was even being considered out there. So who's going to serve the water out there? Did staff explain to the petitioners that there was a second part of this process, which would exchange the electric service territory? Wait, just don't answer that, because I already know the answer, and I would prefer not to have my intelligence insulted by the answer I would hear. I'm sure I'm going to hear how state law says I only need to do this or that, but please refer to my opening statement on how to act with integrity. I could go on to talk about how the City of Vermillion could receive 6% on the revenue that Clay Union received if they were able to continue serving the load. That's the 2% municipal tax and the additional 4% tax for Clay Union serving within the city limits. That's revenues that would be coming into the city for no investment for electrical service. I also could then talk about how we partnered to do what's best for all county members, not just the ones that live in the city limits of Vermillion. So I'm here tonight to speak against the transfer of electric service rights, because it's bad for our, for my membership, which is part of this community and should be considered on decisions like this, and I would request a little bit of courtesy about the notice of these type of actions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, any discussion by counsel? Chris, I have a question for you. Do you have currently any, I'm assuming you don't have any, any service members, but do you have any infrastructure in that plot that you know of?
We do have structure on that, on that area.
You have infrastructure in there?
We do not currently, to my, to my knowledge, we do not serve any services, but we do have electric lines and easements running through there.
I assume that's along the roadway, then?
What's that?
I assume that's along the roadway, then?
I'm sorry?
I assume that's on, along the roadway?
I, I would have to check with my operations staff, but most likely, definitely along the highway side of things.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions from counsel? Counselor Holland?
Is this, this request by us, or is it by, or in conjunction with the gentleman that-
Property owners?
Property owners, yeah.
For the annexation or for the right to serve the property?
Not for the annexation, for the electrical.
For the right to serve the property? That's, that is up to you guys, it's just typically that's what we've done.
Did they request it?
I do not believe they made the request, one way or the other.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion by counsel?
And we have a year, is that right? To make that request, a year.
Yep. We, we have a year to make the notice of intent.
Any other discussion by counsel, or any motions?
I'd like, I'd like to know if the owner is interested in that. Do, do we ask, or?
Well, typically, I think for the most part, the owners are aware that if they become part of the city, that then they can get the amenities that come with being part of the city, right?
It's a good amenity, but I didn't know if they requested it.
Is there any motions? Motion approved by Counselor Genuine. Is there a second? Hearing no second, motion dies for lack of second.
If I may.
Any other discussion? Go ahead, counsel, or-
Go ahead, John. So, I mean, this is, this is kind of reflective of what we spent the 2020, 2019, 2020, and we did the summer study on this at the legislative level, which Mr. Larson participated in, as well as the city did. And every time the city has grown, our service territory grows, and you can say that it is the good and the bad of being part of the city, but to help our utility grow, to help our community grow, that is what we've always done. And that's, you get, you know, to get all the services of the city, this is an aspect of that. So you have the water, the sewer, which undoubtedly, if they're looking at development, they likely want with this. I don't know with respect to Clay World Water what they would do or not do. The electrical is part of that package. And so as we're providing services to have the city grow, and to have the city's full services provided in an area which is, makes the most sense that we all are providing all the missed blacks, aspects of being in the city to that, we strongly recommend that you continue the past practices of the organization back into the 1990s, that as the city grows, we expand our electrical service territory to do that. There, there was an effort led to study this, to change that, to, to impact that back, as I referenced in the summer study and the legislative session, and that died. That didn't go nowhere. That didn't go nowhere. So this is providing all the residents that we can, the full benefit and, and services of the city. So we'd strongly recommend that you approve the authorization to the Royal Electric Co-op of the intent to annex this area into the city's service territory.
Thanks. Thank you, John. Quick question, I'll miss that. I see Jim Peterson out there. Sorry to call you on the spot, but can, sorry. I know you've worked with the owners of this property and there's discussion. Have they, at least the owners, are there discussion of potential development on what direction for city utilities? Has that been discussed at all or?
It was discussed previously, so it would be their intent over time if it is annexed to the city, which this is their first start of the process, and if, and when it gets developed, it would want, based on what I knew at the time, if it's still those same individuals, they would want it to be city utilities.
Thank you. Council Targaryen, a question?
Yeah, I, you know, I think I'm in favor of like the city growing and doing what we need to do to, to expand and to make those things available, but I feel like two weeks ago, I even asked this question that I, I asked specifically in a meeting, what was the future intent of that? And nobody mentioned anything. They said nothing, they're just doing some dirt work out there. And then when I hear the gentleman from Clay County come in here and say that he was notified Friday, I feel like this has really been sprung up on short notice. And I guess I'd like to, before I vote yes on something, I'd like to maybe find out a little bit more information on it going forward, whether that means we revisit this in two weeks, maybe with a little bit more of understanding what's happening.
I'm not, that would be up to the owner, what they can disclose or what they can.
And that's fine, if they don't want to disclose anything, then I'm going to be opposed to it. That's just my thoughts. I'd just like to have a better idea of what's going on instead of just kind of jumping into something and voting yes just to vote yes.
I guess I would offer that, you know, every property could have multiple owners over its lifetime, and so this is, what they do or don't do, we don't know what that is yet. We don't have a development plan, we don't have a building permit request. This is regarding the future development of the organization in, in the community and the utility, more so than it is what that person's going to do. Because we don't have a building permit application, we don't have a rezoning request, we don't have water line requests or those things. This is putting the territory, the same as, I'm trying to think of the last annexation we did before this.
Jaco.
Well, Jaco, sorry.
Well, and Masaba.
Masaba. Those were done long before Jared Higman ever turned in a building plan or idea. It's, as the city grows, we expand our utility boundary to match the city boundaries as best we can.
I would like to add too, is that the notification that's sent out to Clay County, I'm here tonight asking for approval to notify them of our intent. And what he's asking me to do is to notify him that I'm going to ask to be the approval to notify you. So until you guys give me the green light to yes, let's go ahead and move forward, that's when I would send him out the notification with the map and all of the legal description and all of the pertinent information. But until I get authorization from you guys, I don't really know how much I should be sharing with him. So I tell him that this item's going to be on the agenda and when it is. We didn't receive this annexation request until last week. So until it was all put on the agenda and was ready to go out, I, that's why it was late to getting to him is because we didn't get it until early last week, so.
Council Lieber?
Well, if, if this gets approved and you notify them, is it automatic then? The, the city automatically then takes over and they have no, and they have no say in it? So the notification isn't just notifying, it's just we're taking it in a sense?
Well, I wouldn't say that we're taking it. We're, they're getting paid for it. Right now, it is a cornfield, so anything that gets built there, they're going to get paid 25% of any of the revenues that we collect for up to seven years, and that window is an 11-year process. For the next 11 years, anything that gets built out there, they're going to get money for doing absolutely nothing, as he said, right? So they're not just getting it, we're not taking it. We are buying it out, following state statute.
So just to clarify this budgetary question, so we're paying for it even though nothing's out there, we're still paying for?
No, so right, so right now, if we, if we move forward with this, if you guys give me the authorization, we'll start the process to moving it through the PUC, that then legally transfers it into our service territory. Until something is built out there, then they wouldn't receive any money. If he does have some infrastructure that's in place, we would pay to reintegrate that system outside of our service territory, or, you know what I mean? So we would pay for anything. I don't believe there's anything in the middle of the cornfield, so I don't think there'll be any reintegration fees. That's something that we worked with, with Clay Union staff to figure out. But then anything that does get built out there, that's when, as soon as that starts, that's when we start paying lost revenue.
So we would still be paying lost revenues on empty ground once it gets built? Is that what you're saying?
Only when new customers come in. So as soon as we, as soon as we start this window, we start an 11-year window, okay? So in, if next year something builds, we're going to pay seven years of lost revenue on that building. If something gets built in, let's say, seven years, we would only pay four years of lost revenue until that 11-year window is, is closed.
Okay.
If we do not make this move within the next year, then we have no rights to that ground ever. That would stay in their territory forever.
Any other discussion by council? At this time, we have no motions. Is there a motion to reconsider the motion to, to approve? Second by Council Holland. Any other discussion on that motion? Council Murra?
I just want to, I understand his frustration, I understand where you're coming from, and Jay, I just want to talk to you a little bit about, we just did this with Masaba two years ago?
About a year ago, I think it was.
Year ago.
The territory of the building?
Well, we bought, we got the power from Clay Union. Isn't that about a year ago, a little over a year ago?
I think it was 2023.
The way I look at it, I know Clay Union doesn't like to lose power, and nobody would like to lose a customer. But in order to keep, and I'm with John on this, in order to keep our city growing, part of being annexed into the city is you get the city utilities. That's the whole game we're playing. I mean, I think that helps develop things a little better too. I understand where you're coming from, Jay, you want to see a plan. I kind of want to see what's going to go on up there too, if they have anything at all. But I, I don't think we can hold back on not expanding our, our utilities to an area that we're annexing in just because we don't have a plan right away. I mean, I know we've gone through this before on Stanford Street because we didn't have a plan or something like that, but the way I look at it, if we can annex in and keep our city growing and we have land there, because that is always a high commodity, if we can add the land to our city and bring the utilities there and have everything ready to go, it's easier to develop than if we just leave it set there and do nothing.
Well, then my point would, did I be, why wouldn't we annex, while we're doing this, why wouldn't we take the land to the east of the golf course? Is that not city property right now?
No, it is not, but this is a developer-driven annexation. So the developer requested it, and so they requested it, or the owners, I should say. I don't know that the lover developed, but they're, they're the ones who requested this annexation. We've not had that request for ground east of this, the golf course.
Council Price?
I just want to say, I really appreciate all this discussion and hearing from the staff and all the different perspectives of this, and I appreciate that, so I would be in support of this.
I think.
No, it's, yes, it's already the motions by Council Genoine and a second by Council Holland.
But I would second if you need to go further.
A second, second.
I would.
Is there any other discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item we have is a First Amendment, or, yeah, First Amendment to the South Dakota Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force Joint Powers Agreement. Chief Brady?
Good evening. The Internet Crimes Against Children, ICAC Task Force, was programmed, was established in 1998 by the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention within the United States Department of Justice. It was created in response to the increasing use of the internet by children and the rise of online child exploitation, including the proliferation of child sexual abuse material and online predators. The ICAC program aims to help state and local law enforcement agencies develop effective responses to techno, techno, technology facilitated child exploitation and internet crimes against children. There were originally 12 ICAC task forces. Today, there are 61 task forces with at least one in every state. The ICAC Task Force in South Dakota was established in 2006. The lead agency is the South Dakota DCI. They currently have 15 affiliate agencies in the state. In 2024, the South Dakota DCI received 1,850 cyber tips here in South Dakota. So what they're requesting is for the Vermillion Police Department to become an affiliate agency with them. What that would mean is when they receive a tip that is in Vermillion, and they receive about 15 to 20 tips per year on average in Vermillion, they would relay that to our Lieutenant of Investigations, who would assign it to one of our detectives to work on. That would require us to, you know, maybe do interviews with some witnesses, victims, suspects, potentially do search warrants and collect evidence on a case. A bigger case, we would receive assistance still from the DCI and their agents to help with that and would just help in our area, help DCI work on those cases. There is no cost to the Vermillion Police Department for this. Actually, we would receive a laptop computer for our detectives to work on these cases because obviously, this is the type of material that we would not want on our current computers that we use. And then there is funding that the DCI has to send our investigators to training for this particular topic. So I would recommend that we go ahead and become an affiliate agency with the DCI for ICAC.
Thank you, Chief Brady. Any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion? I'm going to put in, or Council Cheeseman, you have something?
So when you're talking about tips, what, what does that mean? Is that like somebody physically seeing something on?
Yeah, it could be, it could be anything. So they would describe to us, there's four levels. So it could be something such as they have information that a child is actually being sexually exploited right now, and they have that information online, or, you know, somebody, a child has been, pictures have been taken of that child and they're being posted on the internet video, and it can all be down to a, a lower level where juvenile is downloading videos on the internet and they are of, you know, pornographic nature of young children. So DCI understands like what level the tips are and lets us know what those are and gives us the information of what the tip is.
Any questions? Council Price?
I'm kind of surprised that we weren't members of this before, if this has been in the state since, what, what did you say, 2004?
2006.
2006?
Yeah.
Is there a reason to, that everybody's joining now or that we're joining now and weren't before?
Um, I think a lot more agencies are just joining recently. I think it was before, it was more of the bigger cities, Sioux Falls, Rapid City, Watertown. Those are the agencies that have just historically been part of this. Yankton Police Department, and then Sheriff's Department just recently joined, I think it was in December. So now they're trying to get in agencies that are about our size in different areas that help out the DCI agents. So, I mean, this is the, probably the first time that we've been approached about it.
Is it like they have more funding or they're growing or it just seems like weird that all of a sudden?
No, it's just when, when the internet grows, you get more and more tips. And where there maybe wasn't quite as many tips in the Vermillion area in past years, over the years, it's been growing the number of tips that we get, that they feel if our investigators helped with those cases, that would help take some of the load off of a DCI agent that's in our area.
Council Holland has a question?
Yeah, it's, it's my mind. This is crimes against children, but we, we're saying juvenile. What, what's the age of it, 18 or?
Uh, the crimes, anybody under the age of 18 is a juvenile. Yes.
Okay, so that, that makes it a lot more likely to happen.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I can, I can tell you guys this much firsthand, in working with this task force at a prior agency, I think this is a very important task force. I was just looking at the year, I didn't mention it to Mr. Prescott, that I was on that back when it first started, or not too long after, but it's come a long way as internet has grown, social media has grown, different apps have grown. From my understanding, this also isn't just internet-driven, but it's phone-based, app-based, anything that the, that this can be distributed on. I think it's a very important safety tactic to keep our, our children safe, so I would definitely entertain a motion on this if anybody's got one.
Motion approved by, motion to approve is joined by Council Holland, a second by Council Murra. Any other discussion on this? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief Brady.
Thank you.
Next item we have is to declare lots 1 through 13 of Block 1 Jolly Addition Surplus. I believe this is the former Jolly School site.
That is correct. You know, as this process moves along, the developer, excuse me, the demolition company is doing nice work, they're moving along very rapidly with that project. We don't want to get too far ahead of them, but we also don't want to get too far behind them. And so anytime we have publicly owned land, one of the steps that we take before we can sell it is to have you declare it surplus. And so what's before you this evening, what we're asking for is if the city council would declare the lots 1 through 13 of Block 1 Jolly Addition Surplus. What we would then do is arrange a meeting of your surplus property committee where the prices would be established for that property. What we're thinking of suggesting at this point in time is that we've had different interests in several of the lots, is that perhaps you do a sealed bid to start the process and that way, individuals would have an opportunity to bid on the respective lot that they might want. And then after that, I would like to say that all 13 are going to sell at once, but probably won't happen. We would then bring it back and you can decide whether you want to transfer them to the VCDC to sell or just sell them off one by one as they come up. But nonetheless, regardless of which way you go from there, your first step is to declare the lots surplus. That will allow us to move forward to get them appraised by the committee and move forward with the preferred method the city council selects to sell the lots.
Thank you, John. Any visitors to be heard on this? Council for discussion? Council Lieber?
Just infrastructure though, is that going to be done before or after surplus? I mean, I would think it would be done before. How's that work?
Great point, Council member, and it was on my notes here that I wish I would have made, is that what we're seeing right now is the demolition of the building, and that's great, and that's a step towards making the lots happen to create a for housing. But we also need to go back in there and move those curb lines back out where the bus inled, the pickup lanes were at on the Linden side and the university side. Last summer, we worked in a project Shane and Jose did to coordinate it so that we stubbed out the water and sewer for those respective lots in university. We need to go back and do the same thing on the Linden side, so we have that work to do. So we, we don't want, people might say, oh, 30 days from now, the building's gone, well we still have utility work to do there. So this is a step in the process. We want to have the lots as close to ready to go when we're selling those as possible, understanding that we might put them on the market, sell them roughly 30 days or so before that project's done so that somebody can go through the building permit process and plan.
Well, I guess the question was, we're surplusing them before we finish our job?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be, finish what we're doing first and then surplus that are, or am I getting it mixed up?
I, I think we're okay from the standpoint, you've approved the plat for the lots, so the boundaries of those lots have been set. That won't, those won't change any with regard to the demolition work that's going to take place.
Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Council Price, is there a second? Second by Council Cheeseman, any other discussion on this? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next item is First reading of ordinance 1534. This is a reference to the budget process.
So this is a follow-up from a discussion you had at your April 21 noon meeting. 920, 9-21-34 was adopted back in 2021. And what this essentially does is provides flexibility to you with your budget process. Right now, by state statute, the budget has to be presented at your first meeting in August, and then you go through the process. The public may or may not know, the council spends a couple days in August going through that budget, and then you have the formal adoption of the budget for the following fiscal year, which is the same as the calendar year, in September. What this statute was that was adopted allows you to move that process back later in the year. So you can introduce that budget ordinance as late as the first meeting in November. So you can introduce that budget ordinance as late as the first meeting in November with the, if you adopt an ordinance that provides for this. So you'd be looking at it in November versus in August. One thing that doesn't change is you do need to certify the property tax levy before the first of October. That allows the county to do the process that they need to do with respect to property taxes. The ordinance says before you tonight would provide flexibility to move that process back in the budget, in the calendar year, so that you would have a little bit more information, potentially. Newer councilmembers might have been on, on board a little bit longer before they'd start through that process. You may have better information on your projects that yet to be completed this year or the next budget year. There's also, you know, potential cons with, you know, once school starts up, that does impact people's flexibility, their free time. We talked a little bit about some of those at the April meeting where we discussed this concept. It does not require you to move your budget year, but it provides you the flexibility to move your budget year. One thing that I would suggest, whatever budget year you process, if you're going to change that, we need to have some certainty with that from year to year. So the outside agencies that are looking at applications for funding for you, that the public participation in that process, they have a pretty good idea of when that's going to take place rather than, oh, this year we're going to do it in August, next year we'll do it in September, then we're back to August, then we go to October. We'll probably need to, if you will, pick a cycle that works. We do recommend this ordinance to advance to a second reading at your next council meeting on June second. As I said, this ordinance provides a flexibility, but does not require you to move your budget year.
Thank you, John, any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, move to council for discussion. Any discussion by council? I would, I would also like to mention that if this is adopted, I would like to, I think, move our budget meeting, I think there's an easy compromise. I know we had talked about October, right now it's August. I think a compromise could be September for, for right now, to see how that works. I realize it's in the beginning of the school year, but I think October might be a little bit busier. So I would throw that out to the council as staff prepares for that for, preparing for the budget and getting department heads, so I want to also put that on the table to discuss as well. Councilor Holland?
I move to, move it to the second reading.
Motion advances second read by Councilor Holland. Second to advances second reading by Councilor Price. Is there any other discussion? Any thoughts on the September idea I just threw out? Council Murrah?
I, I was going to throw September out too, so I mean, either right away in September or halfway through, I don't, I don't know how. It has to be done, well, part of it has to be done by October first, is that right?
That's correct, yep, you have to certify the property tax levy.
Okay. I like September, I'd say, like I say, I was actually going to suggest that earlier, so.
Council Price?
But we're not actually deciding that with this, we're just voting on the ordinance, right?
Correct, yeah, it's just more of a direction for staff to know when to get their budget ready.
Okay.
That's not part of the motion, no. Any air discussion? Motion on the table to advance to the second reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Or by saying nay? Motion carries. Next item we have is bid opening, or we don't have any bid openings, City Manager's Report.
Uh, several different items for you, just one meeting before your next city council meeting on June second is the Library Board does meet this Wednesday, the twenty-first at six PM in the Kozak Room at the library. Your Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting next Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, that at five thirty PM. That is a joint meeting of the City Planning and Zoning Commission and the Clay County zoning, excuse me, the Clay County Planning Commission. The item on their agenda is to consider a zoning amendment to the Joint Jurisdictional Zoning Area Regulations. The proposed amendment is to amend Chapter Six, the Light Industrial District, that was a district that you adopted just a year or so ago, to amend the language in there for permitted use definitions to include trail, excuse me, train, car repair and maintenance as a permitted use in the Light Industrial District for joint jurisdiction. So that is again Wednesday, May twenty-eighth at five thirty here at City Hall. City offices will be closed next Monday, May twenty-sixth for the Memorial Day holiday. Couple of updates, the city received a twenty thousand dollar grant through ICMA and the Gates Foundation. It's for an Economic Mobility and Opportunity Program that we'll be working on developing this year, and we'll have more information on that to come. The City's Historic Preservation Commission, they've been working on developing a website. That website is now live and contains a lot of information, and kudos to them for the work that they put into this. Vermillionhpc.org is the website for the Historic Preservation Commission for the city. A couple of board and commission openings here. We did have a member of the Human Relations Commission resign as they are relocating to another state. We, so we're going to accept expression of interest forms for the remaining two years in this term. So there's two years left, those expression of interest forms should be submitted by June fifth coming up here, and anticipate then that we'll have the appointment on your June sixteenth city council agenda. And then also the Housing Authority, they have one term that comes up every June. And again, we ask the expression of interest forms for a full five-year term be accepted. We'll accept those for June fifth with an appointment at your June sixteenth meeting. And just a reminder to our Labor and Finance Committee members that you have hopefully a quick meeting right after this in the Powell Conference Room.
Thank you, John. Next item will be the invoices, everyone had a chance to review the bills? If so, are there any questions on any of the bills or is there any motions to pay the bills? Council Price?
Actually, I don't have a question, but I wanted to make a comment after studying the bills for the public who might not be studying the bills, that at least two people received reimbursements for the Retree Vermillion Program. And a week or two ago, or a month, or whenever it was, we heard Jim talk about the Retree Program where you can get a reimbursement from the city to plant a tree. And so it looks like people are taking advantage of that in the invoices. And so I hope a whole bunch more people do that and we plant some trees. So I would move we pay our bills.
Totally stole my thunder, I was going to make the same comment.
Were you?
Motion to pay the bills.
Brilliant minds. Second?
Second by Councilor Holland? Any air discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Or by saying nay? Motion carries. Nothing else is on the agenda other than motion to adjourn. Motion by Council Murrah, second by Councilor Lieber. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Or say nay? Meeting adjourned.